Okay, thank you for your patience. As you know, this past week, last Friday, we lost our city manager. And tonight was an executive session was to be able to take some corrective actions in moving forward. And what we did is we are going to be appointing LeAnn Bundsmeyer as our interim city manager. And so again, we just want to thank you for your patience and why it's we're a little bit late in getting started tonight. With that, I call this meeting to order. We'll have the invocation. If everybody would stand, Mr. Garber will do that, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, I just want to come before you this evening and thank you. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and this council's heart that we had the opportunity to work with such a wonderful man for five years. Father, thank you for the work that you encouraged him to do on our team. And Lord, we know that there is somebody out there that is to fill the city manager's position. And Lord, we ask that that person is every bit as focused on the team and the people and the development of this city and those that work here as Bob was. And Lord, in the meantime, we're grieving. It's tough. Anytime you have somebody in your life that means this much to you, it's inevitable that in their passing, it's going to be this difficult. And so, Lord, through this time, we just ask for your grace and we ask for peace over this team. And we ask for all of that in Jesus's name. Amen.
Do you place the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. At this time, I would entertain a motion, council, to establish Elan -- boy, I'm having trouble tonight. LeAnn Bundsmeyer as our interim city manager for the city of Corinth.
Mayor, I would move to appoint LeAnn Bundsmeyer to serve as the interim city manager and designate the mayor as the council contact to work with LeAnn during the interim term.
I second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
I can't. This one will be by the House. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Garber?
Yes.
Councilmember Holsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Pickens?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Henderson?
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a few proclamations to --
Mayor, can I make a second motion?
Sure can.
Mayor, I would move to authorize the HR director to solicit a contract from Slaven Management Consultants to assist in the recruitment of our replacement city manager.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on that? Cast your vote.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Holsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Henderson? Mrs. Pickens?
It's unanimous. Is it anymore?
But thank you for asking. I'll try not to interrupt.
You're on a roll. Okay, the first proclamation is supporting Bicycle Safety and Awareness Month. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than a vehicle driver. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and whereas during all citizens, urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. is fundamental to the future of the city of Corinth. Now therefore, I Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the city of Corinth, Texas, do hereby proclaim The citizens of the city of Corinth value their overall health and that of their families the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city and urge all residents and fellow citizens and are proud to support observance such as Mental Health Month and to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Signed, the 5th day of May 2022. And one in five adults has a diagnosable mental health condition, and only half of Now, is there anybody here representing motorcyclists? Come down to the center and get your picture, put you on the front page of the newspaper, Denton County parents are not familiar with the mental health services in this community. and we'll even give you the microphone to speak if you want. And the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for individuals and
Outstanding. Okay. Do you have anything to say?
families placed upon our community is a critical responsibility.
I just want to be basic for our whole community sport. We appreciate it.
And there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans
Thank you.
Thank you.
can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. And each citizen, local business, school, government agencies, healthcare providers, and faith-based organizations shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness, recovery, and suffer support, prevention efforts, and Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's. Through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. And it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the directions of our thoughts and towards mental health education and support of the treatment and recovery. And it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the directions of your thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. And therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the city of Corinth, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month and May 7, 2022, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And I call upon our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every person's mental health needs to unite this month in the observance of such exercises as will commit the people of Corinth to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people mental health condition. Signed, the 5th day of May 2022. Is there someone here for the mental health? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Sure. Thank you, honorable counsel and of the city of Corinth. We just thank you so much and all the citizens for making this a priority to discuss this very important topic. Mental health concerns affect over 167,000 of our people in our own county. One in five adults and children in the United States will be affected by a mental health concern at any given time in a given year. And so, there's hope, there's help. We're part of that process at Denton County MHMR Center, and we just, again, thank you so much for making this a priority today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation is Drinking Water Week in the city of Corinth 2022. Water is our most valuable natural resource, and drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene, needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy, and tap water deliveries, public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy, and the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' tap. And the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, and we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our sources of waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with the water by familiarization themselves with it. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the city of Corinth, do hereby proclaim May 1 through the 7, 2022, as Drinking Water Week. Signed, the 5th day of May 2022.
Is there anyone that supplies us our water?
A lot of me. Congratulations.
You want to say a prayer?
Yes. I just want to thank the council for the recognition and to the citizens, it's been an honor serving you. It is one of the greatest opportunities that I've been given, so I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. The International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and the Entrepreneurialship Development Professional. And economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide its stable tax base. And economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurialism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of the American economy. And economic developers are engaged in a wider variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, providential, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerces, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their region. And economic developers work in the city of Corinth within the state of Texas. Now therefore, I, Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the city of Corinth, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 through May 13, 2022, as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. Signed, the 5th day of May 2022.
Congratulations. Speaker, podium is yours.
Joan, you have to come up here with me. Okay. On behalf of the EDC Board, we want to thank you for what you do, and we're looking forward to all the exciting projects that we have in the pipeline. And I just personally want to thank Bob Hart for hiring me. I absolutely love this community and working with the EDC Board, staff, and of course, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation to recognize National Police Week 2022 and to honor the service and sacrifice to those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and May 15 is nationally observed as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and municipal officers who through their courage, deeds, made ultimate sacrifices in serving service to their community or become disabled in the line of duty. And law enforcement officers of the city of Corinth Police Department work devotedly and selfishly on behalf of all residents, provide aid to the residents of the Lake Cities, selfishly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crime, and the Corinth Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal dedication to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to this community. Now therefore, I, Bill Hydeman, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21, 2022, as Police Week in the city of Corinth, and salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the country. Signed, the 5th day of May, May 2022. And today, we have Chief Gardner and --
Mr. Mayor, council, we have asked the Clint Ventrica family to accept the proclamation on behalf of the police department, sir.
will be attending as a family, and two police officers are going to be attending National Police Week in Washington, DC next week. And we're going to honor Clint and his service, and his name is engraved on the national memorial wall in DC. And so, we're going to go visit that and see it. So, we really appreciate this and thank you. And he was very proud of his service and how he served this community, and I just appreciate this, and it's very special to us. So, thank you.
Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time.
I have received them.
No? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or a council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? It's unanimous. Consider an act on the purchase of a generator. Whoops. That's consent agenda. Yeah. Excuse me. We're going to the business agenda. Item number 14. Consider an act on an ordinance amending the city of Corinth's comprehensive plan envisioned Corinth 2040 to amend the future land use and development strategy map by changing the designation of lots 1 through 11, approximately 2.144 acres, within the Lake Vista Business Park subdivision located on the north side of the Lake Sharon Drive, formerly Dobbs Road, between I-35 and Mayfield Circle, from the mixed residential place type CPA 21-001, mixed residential to employment office. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, at this time, we'll call Michelle Mixel, and her presentation will cover items number 14 and 15.
Okay.
Thank you, council, mayor. This is really just a formalizing step from March 17, where you had a public hearing. You heard testimony on this item, as well as its companion piece, which is item number 15, which is actually planned development ordinance for the Lake Vista Business Park, where they are proposing to do a mixed office development. And in order to promote this, to permit this project, we needed to amend the comprehensive plan. And I'll just remind you of this item we're changing, we're expanding. The area was originally identified as mixed residential. It was plotted originally and infrastructure constructed as industrial. And so, we're simply wrote an ordinance to move the office employment, which is just across the way on Lake Sharon, which was formerly Dobbs, to that location. Should I go straight into the next item, the PD? Shay, would you mind pulling that one up?
And this is on item number 15?
Yes, it is.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, this is the planned development. If you recall, it was for PD 61. It's 2.2 acres, permitting 31,362 square feet of office, commercial flex space, providing for retail and restaurant. It's also, the project will also combine four lots into one and allow for shared parking. And the PD ordinance, along with the comprehensive plan amendment ordinance, are attached in your packet.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. All right, I entertain a motion on item number 14.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-05-05-13 as presented. Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 15. Consider an act on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code to rezone in approximately 2.144 acres located within the Lake Vista Business Park subdivision on the north side of Lake Sharon Drive, formerly Dobbs Road, between I-35 and Mayfield Circle, from MXC Mixed Use Commercial to Planned Development District 61, PD-61, Lake Vista Business Park, with a base zoning district of MXC Mixed Use Commercial. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 22-05-05-14, adopting the Lake Vista Business Park lots 8 through 11, PD 61, as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item 16. Consider an act on the ordinance amending and zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth from SF4 Single Family Residential detached to a planned development with a base zoning district of SF4 Single Family Residential detached on an approximately 9.65 acres generally located on the south side of Lake Sharon Drive and east of Parkridge Drive. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, I'm going to call on Michelle Mixel again to present this item.
Thank you. As a reminder, a public hearing was conducted on March 17 to hear public comment. A presentation was provided at that time. This project is to, a planned development for 44 detached single-family dwellings with one common open space lot. They are preserving several trees on site, and with council input, provided common open space, a green space. And this is just a reminder of what the concept plan looked like, and the PD ordinance is contained in your packet.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-05-05-15 as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Item number 17. Consider an act on the ordinance of the city of Corinth approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, an annual program of services to provide an expenditure of funds for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses, KUBA, and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, thank you. So, items number 17 and number 18 are together. The first one is a budget amendment, and the second one is to ratify the purchase. This item was originally scheduled for the April 21 council meeting that was canceled. The SEBA, which is your air packs, expire in December. There is a supply chain issue, and then also, the price of the equipment was supposed to substantially increase on May 1. So, the city manager went ahead after the council meeting was canceled and authorized the purchase. So, this is a budget amendment to take the monies out of the Lake Cities Vehicle Replacement Fund for the $226,000 and to ratify the purchase of the equipment.
Are there any questions from council?
I have a question. So, because I remember reading this back for that meeting, and it seems like they were all being replaced but two. So, why did we not replace those two?
I'll call on Chad Thiessen to answer that one.
Good question.
There are two that we bought that were not part of the original fleet, and those two are in chief vehicles. And they are just a couple of years old. So, they're not in the same need to buy as the 27. So, there are, you're correct, there are two more, and we'll have to buy those two at their end of 10-year life. But they're, they're not going to be part of the 27.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-05-05-16, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual program of services for the Lake City's Fire Capital Fund.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? It's unanimous. Item number 18. Consider ratifying the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses, KUBA gear for the Lake City's Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $226,410 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify the purchase of the SCBA gear through Metro Fire Apparatus Specialist in an amount not to exceed $226,410 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider, item number 19. Consider an act on the ordinance of the city of Corinth approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, an annual program of service to provide for the expenditure of funds to pay for the purchase of the advanced metering infrastructure and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
Just like the other one, item 19 and item 20 are together. The first one is a budget amendment and the second one is the authorization of the purchase. On the April 7 council meeting, we had a workshop to discuss the need and the issues that we were having with the AMI system on our current water system. And so, what this item does, it amends the budget, a million dollars out of the, oh, I can't remember the name of it now. The, excuse me, it's been a day. Out of the asset management fund for the water, wastewater, and then half a million out of the rate stabilization fund. Now, I do want to tell the council that this will essentially take the balances in those two funds down to zero as we had just started those funds about two years ago. And then, the purchase for the meters is 1.5 million. That's the second item. And so, that would start the process. We would move the months to a capital fund. And then, the transition to this would take somewhere between six to nine months.
Will we be replenishing, like, money for those two accounts and bring them back up?
It will take time. At this, the last few years, we were only transferring in somewhere between 2 to 400,000, depending on how much capacity we had within our water rates, water and sewer rates.
Are there any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 22-05-17, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, an annual program of services for the purchase of advanced metering infrastructure.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 20. Consider an act on the purchase of Badger Beacon Advanced Metering Equipment in the amount not to exceed $1,570,000, authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of the Badger Beacon Advanced Metering Equipment through Atlas Utility Supply Company for an amount not to exceed $1,563,055 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 21. Consider an act on the ordinance of the city of Corinth approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, an annual program of service to provide for the expenditures of funds to pay for the additions of three full-time public works positions and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bundemeyer.
So, in that same April 7 workshop, we discussed the demands on the public work staff, not only with the issues that we were currently having with the AMI system, but also in the fact that due to those demands, they were not able to continue with the construction maintenance and so forth. It was causing a backlog on those projects. So, what this does, it does budget three positions for the remainder of the year, which is 95,000, from now to the end of September. And then, those would be incorporated as full-time positions in the next budget year beginning in October.
Are there any questions from council?
I have one. I'm sorry. So, these positions are not just to get us through this. They will be permanent full-time positions, correct?
Correct. Due to the growth that we're experiencing and expect to have within the next few years, this, the department was already short-staffed to begin with. And so, now with the growth, it just puts them a little bit further behind. So, those positions are needed to, to continue on in future years.
I think it's great. I think it's very needed.
Are there any other questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 22-05-05-18, amending the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, an annual program of services to pay for the addition of three full-time public works positions.
Second.
Any further questions? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to the fellow council members, the public and/or staff, on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a few things about Bob. Probably everybody will, and I'm just the lucky guy that gets to go first. Bob was one of those rare people that made me think of the Lord's Prayer. You know, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Bob worked every day, from what I observed, to make earth a little more like heaven. He did it with wisdom, hard work, and humor. He believed in small incremental improvements. He believed in big inspirational improvements. And I hope I don't steal any of, too much of Scott's thunder, but I'm a little bit. Scott went with Bob to a TML conference not long after Bob started here. And when Bob started here, I think the council was under the delusive belief that Bob was lucky to get this job. And Scott quickly learned that we were really damn lucky that Bob took the job. Quickly learned that Bob was a superstar among city managers, a scholar, someone that was looked upon in this business, is an expert. And Scott, I think at some point, marveling at the reaction of all the people around him to Bob, asked Bob something along the lines of, "Why did you take the job with Corinth?" And Bob told Scott, "Well, you know, when organizations get too big, it's just more about process. And I like people." Bob was a people person, and he wanted to build better people. And he did it consistently and with compassion, you know? He gave us books to read, and he did little things to make all of us look better. And I, you know, there's not many people watching, but these little sheets up here, this is the kind of thing that would happen after Bob got here. Because he wanted, and it may not have been Bob's idea, but these are the kind of things that Bob inspired, you know? So, we weren't very good at reading out the motions correctly. And so, now we have scripts, so we don't mess it up. I can't count how many ordinances, from the mundane to the most important, that we've been through with him since we hired him in 2016, making small improvements all along the way. He's assembled a great team, and I think he's inspired all of us to be better. And if he was sitting over there tonight, probably the last thing we'd hear before we left is some encouragement from Bob to go to some meeting or event or something else that would give us the opportunity to be better people. And I'll miss that. But I also am so grateful that we got this time with him. And this is such a better place to work and to live because we got time with him. And I just wanted everybody to know that. And everybody does. But sometimes, even when your words are inadequate, you just want to express your gratitude, you know? So, thank you, Bob.
Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And Sam, you did steal most of my monologue. But I, I think the, the piece that maybe is left out is any relationship that I've had, always have the opportunity to look back and, you know, take stock of what I've learned and then look for the actual fruit that has come from new things that have been learned. And I'll tell you that my staff in the companies that I run and operate are probably just as happy that Bob was in and around me as much as I was. I changed my mind from empire building to the development of people and team. And it's just reminded me how, how important those relationships are around us, even in a setting that sometimes can have these invisible walls, like, you know, protocol and those types of things. And it's made me do one other thing, and that is, don't wait to tell people how much they mean to you, because you never know. And there are a lot of people in this room that mean a lot to me. And so, if I come up to you and tell you, "I really appreciate you being here," that's why. Because you just never know when that person's not going to be here. And you want to encourage people to continue to do things that inspire you. And so, I'll leave it there. Sorry, Steve.
Mr. Holdsworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sam and Scott. I'll pass the floor to Ms. Tina. Bob, we miss you.
I remember when I was first elected and how Bob just took me under his wings. And he spent hours and hours teaching me how to, what to do for council. And it wasn't just, like you, like you guys said, it wasn't just how to build our city, but it was how to make myself a better person and things that I needed to do personally. And I think you guys just said it perfectly. And I agree with you, Scott. I went to TML and NLC. We were in San Antonio, and I went home and I told John, I said, "I felt like I was walking around with a celebrity the whole time." You did. Like, you should have a pen out for him to autograph people's books or something. But we're going to miss him. And something that, Sam, you said to me earlier, was that he had built the foundation, and we just have to keep building on it. And those words really stuck with me. And I just want to keep his legacy alive.
Mrs. Pickens.
Well, I disagree with what everybody said before me.
Mrs. Bundemeyer.
First of all, I wanted to announce that the Hart family has made the service arrangements. It will be on Tuesday, May 10th, at 10:00 AM at Denton Bible Church. And with the council's permission, I would like to close the city facilities that day to allow the employees to attend the service. Is that okay? The, the next thing is, and you know, we talk about people. And, you know, many years ago, well, Bob always had exchange students. And he always joked that he had more exchange students, and his wife was always, "Who's coming into our house this time?" But many years ago, he had a young gentleman there from Cambodia, Mei Hing. And it was through that relationship that Bob brought the Cambodian delegation here in 2019. And they spent a week here with the city staff and the city council and the Lake City's community. The, the governor of the Kampung Spu Province of Cambodia, Ve Semnong, and I know I butchered his name, he actually came here to Corinth in 2019. And he sent a letter of condolence to the mayor and the council. And if you may, I'd like to read it to you. Says, "On behalf of the people of the Kampung Spu Province and Cambodia delegates, I wish to convey our most sincere condolences to the people of Corinth City, Texas, after losing Mr. Bob Hart, the city manager, on April 29, 2022. Spending time at Corinth City, Texas in 2019, I have known how warm and great welcome community is. In spite of this losing, I have no doubt that the love and friendship of your city will remain strong. I would also like to pass my deepest sympathy to the staff and colleagues of Corinth City as well as the family of Bob that losing their loved ones on that day. Bob Hart was the incredible manager with kindness, helpfulness, and honesty."
Catherine, did you have something you'd want to say?
Yes, I also want to say that I loved Bob. I was told by others that he, you know, kind of saw me as his daughter. He taught me how to drive the drain going for the first of my life, actually back into a parking space. Back in, back in camera helps a lot, though I still, you know, drive my personal vehicle whenever I can get away with it, just saying. But it wasn't so after that I, you know, it, you know, sunk in that, yeah, he didn't love me, you know, just as an employee, but also as a person. He really invested a lot in me. But I started inserting, it's, I don't even know what a plat was. And then, you know, he said, "Hey, what are your plans for next semester? You want to stick around?" I'm like, "Yes, please, because I love here. I love the culture that he made." I didn't want to go after, you know, just four months. And so, opportunity came. He worked magic and gave me this fancy job title. And so, I, I want to stick around. I know I've been active, working with several of you on Lake City's Focus. And I want to, you know, keep building those relationships. I still want to keep working with y'all on projects, help considering what Bob made. I'm eager to grow and be on hands-on as much as possible going forward.
Thank you. I'm, we missed, we're going to, we missed, we're going to miss-
I'm, we miss, we're going to, we miss, we're going to miss Bob. And I'm really going to miss him, even though he was younger than I am. He was, he was just a great guy and was someone that I met with every Tuesday afternoon. And we had some interesting discussions. And even though his experience was in government, mine was in the corporate world, there's a lot of commonality between the two. And the one thing that, that I, I had a conversation just two weeks ago, and I said, "You know, he gave us all these book reading assignments." I said, "The last one he gave us is an implement game." I said, "That really encapsulated everything about Bob Hart. He was always a forward thinker. He always, he could think on his feet if you asked him tough questions. And he was always, he was a people person. And he and I have a lot in common because his interest was children. And that's what my passion is, and that's why I do all I do for the Lake Cities as far as children. That's our future. And that's what Bob recognized, was we got to bring these children upright, and we got to give them the tools to work with because they're going to replace us in the future." And that, that was always, it always resonated with me, and I think that's one of the reasons that we, he and I got along so well. The other thing I'll tell you is that every spring, we went to a basketball game down at Baylor. And I would, I always knew when it was going to be, because when he'd come in on a Tuesday afternoon, he'd say, "Hey, we're going to Jerusalem on the Brazos." And I said, "Where's that?" And he goes, "That's Waco." And I said, "What are we doing? We're going to basketball game." And one of the things about Bob is, though, he said, "Pick me up." And I asked him last time we, we went down there, I said, "Bob, why do I always pick you up? Why don't you drive once in a while?" He said, "Bill?" He said, "I can't see at nighttime." And he says, "I don't think you want me driving, so..." And the last thing I'll tell you is, I had to tell this to our Rotary Club, you know, I know where Bob is. I know he's up in heaven. And I know who met him at the gates, and it was my wife. And I'm sure they had a lot of things to talk about, but I know one thing, I'm not on the dean's list. So with that, we're going to executive session. We got several items to cover in that. And thanks again, staff, for all that you're doing. We know the pain you're going through. We're going to sit here and we're going to be walking right alongside of you through this whole, whole process. So, thanks again.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more thing, I just didn't seem appropriate to announce it right then, but Friday at 6 o'clock, the New Fairfield Inn is having their grand opening and ribbon cutting. And I know you're speaking at that. So if any, I really think that our, anybody that can be there, please make it Friday at 6 o'clock. And the actual ribbon cutting, and I think you're speaking, is at 6:30. And then afterwards, they're going to have casino games if anyone wants to stay.
So we're going into executive session at 8:23.